Okay, first order of business this evening. Reading and approval of the minutes for the February 20th, 2014 workshop. That was workshop where Sam Rich from Thresher Engineering came to talk about a potential property swap with property that the city owns at Pinecrest Industrial Park, with property that the Veterans Administration of West Virginia had originally owned to construct their nursing home there, and found that the piece of property that we had allowed them to build a single-story unit, which saved them a lot of money. That's about a 200-employee operation, so we're really excited about. So, if we have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Have motion second to approve the minutes of the workshop, February 20th. Next, reading and approval of the minutes for the regular council meeting dated February 27th, 2024.
Motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second. Have motion second to approve the minutes of February 27th, 2024 as presented. All in favor in the cave saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by a like sign, that motion carries. Next on the agenda is a very heartwarming proclamation. We have three members of the Veterans Museum here this evening, Charlie Howke, and Jeff Lehman, and Ron Hedrick. And, I'm sorry, your name again, please?
Brooke.
Okay, Brooke Chang, yeah, good to see you, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm gonna read, I'm gonna just take certain aspects of this proclamation, then Charlie Howke has offered to say a few words. And I told Charlie, you've never said a few words.
It's impossible.
But, we're gonna take it, your word this evening. Do you want to speak before I read the proclamation?
Yes, if I may. Come on up. Who we got here this evening, in the Raleigh County Veterans Museum, we've got Ron Hedrick, who is president, and we've got Jeff Lehman, who is vice president, we've got Brooke Chambers on our board, and we've got the infamous Sherri Hunter on our board as well. And Raleigh County donated to us the Sheriff's Building to the left of the armory. What a great thing for us. So, we're moving, we're working on the Sheriff's Building, we're moving from our small location to little houses on Harper Road. And, as part of the Veterans Museum, these two were working on the Veterans Cemetery over behind the church on Canola. And, in that storage building, they located a monument in there of a gentleman Sergeant Charlton that was born in East Gulf, who won the Medal of Honor and was killed in action in the Korean War. And, and some of this is proclamation. So, it sits now where our new museum's gonna be, and we are, we've got it as a centerpiece, and we will honor Sergeant Charlton and others with our Medal of Honor exhibition. So, that's just a little story. And then with this, I actually called the mayor, and said, "Mayor, we've got a Medal of Honor winner from Raleigh County, I don't think a lot of people know about him, it would be great to honor him in some way." So, Mayor, back to you.
Okay, very good, Charlie, thank you very much. This is a fairly lengthy proclamation, and I'm gonna hit the highlights that I think you'll all appreciate and enjoy. I'll start out with, whereas Cornelius Charlton was one of 17 children to Van and Clara Thompson, friends and family called him Connie. Charlie was born June 24th, 1929, in East Gulf, Raleigh County. He later moved to New York, where he graduated from Monroe High School. He joined the Army, and was stationed in the Orient in 1950 during the Korean Conflict. He was appointed squad leader. On June 2nd, 1951, the 24th Regiment was ordered to take Hill 543 in Chippewa, Korea. Sergeant Charlton took command of the platoon due to the commanding officer being wounded and evacuated. Charlie led the attack. He fought very courageously, and I'm paraphrasing now, he really did some magnificent things. He did suffer a chest wound, and led a third assault, which captured the crest of the ridge. Spotting the enemy's emplacement that was slowing the attack, Charlie charged in alone. The enemy threw grenades at him, but he managed to destroy the hostile position where he died on Hill 543 from wounds. Sergeant Charlton was posthumously awarded Congressional Medal of Honor. And, as we all know, that's about the highest commendation you can receive in the service. He was buried at Bryant Cemetery, near Bramall, West Virginia. In the late 1980s and early 90s, the Medal of Honor Society initiated a program to find all the burial sites of Medal of Honor recipients. Charlton's burial site was located, as Charlie had said, in the Beckley Post, 32 of the American Legion received permission to move his body to the American Legion Cemetery in Beckley on March 10th, 1990. On November 12th, 2008, the remains of Sergeant Charlton were buried at Arlington National Cemetery. Another honor, honestly. Now, therefore, I, Robert Rappold, Mayor of the City of Beckley, present this proclamation to honor Mr. Cornelius H. Charlton for his courageous service to the people of our country, and for his leadership in a time of conflict. And witness where I have set my hand and cause to seal the City of Beckley to be affixed, excuse me, be affixed this Monday, this 12th day of March 2024. Robert Rappold, thank you very much.
This Sergeant Charlton died with Sergeant Charlton's death. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Brooke, thank you. Okay, next, receipt of bids for the mowing of various city properties and parks. I'm getting ahead of myself, I wanted to award that to see. The grass is growing already. This is from Camp Creek Mountain Maintenance. So far, I haven't found a price. Okay, they've quoted this on a weekly basis. Work will be in accordance of the specifications submitted in the proposal, in a professional manner for the sum of $2,020 weekly. Not that I'm trying to prejudice this particular evaluation of this bid, but Camp Creek has been a loyal partner now for, how long, Billy, seven, eight years?
I think so, sir.
Yeah, they've done a great job. Pam, do you have any comments on Camp Creek? Yeah, good. I'll turn this over to the council persons at large, and...
Mayor, if that's the only bid that was received since the deadline passed, if you want to proceed tonight, if this meets with approval of the committee, you could put it up and permit the council to approve this bid, so that they can begin work, if that's your desire.
Well, that's good, that's good news, I appreciate that. Two council persons at large, you want to take a moment to review the one bid?
Or they, what could be done, actually, they could review it afterwards, and if it meets approval, then the action of council will stand. If it doesn't, it will have to come back to council.
So, you're saying we can vote on it now?
Vote on it now, subject to, vote on it now, approving it, subject to the
Alrighty.
Approval of the committee.
So, I make a motion to approve the $2,020 weekly invoice for parks and different pocket parks?
Forty-two green spaces.
Forty, okay, forty-two, okay, in the City of Beckley, for this coming growing season.
Okay, we have motion, do we have second?
Second.
Have motion second to approve the bid as presented, from Camp Creek. All in favor in the cave saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by a like sign, motion carries, thank you. Next, approval of the budget for the fiscal year, July 21, 24 through June 30, 2023. Mr. Trump?
Yes, sir. We're required by the State Auditor's Office to submit a budget before the end of this month, and I presented counsel a very detailed revenue and cost projection, and what I have before them right now is a summary that will go forward to the State Auditor's Office if they approve it. So, right now, we can approve the budget, we need to get it into the hands of the State Auditor, and the first council meeting in July, we'll probably, we'll have to make a budget revision, because not all of the revenue and stuff is gonna be perfectly accurate, so, but this has to be submitted, so if anyone on council has any questions about it, I'll be happy to try to address them.
Very good. Have motion to approve the budget as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Have motion second to present the budget as presented. All in favor in the cave saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by a like sign, motion carries, thank you. And Billy Trump and Jessica Chandler, thank you so much for the hard work on the budget and the effort put into it, thank you. Next, we have fire department compensation across the board, with annual increase of $2,000 annually. Billy, would you like to give us a rundown on, I know there's been some concern about this expenditure, and all I can say is, our finance department wouldn't have presumed it if it weren't a viable thing to do, and we have in the past six months or so awarded increases to the police department, Board of Public Works, and personally, I don't think this is very much in line. Billy, do you want to give us some details?
One of the really good advantages of the drop program that council approved was, we can, with certainty, determine the last day of people on the drop program. So, in the next, in the coming fiscal year, we have probably six, maybe more, of the more senior members of the fire department leaving. And, of course, if you're a senior member, many of these guys have over 30 years, they're high-dollar guys. So, to replace them, we bring in entry-level people, and the difference between the salary of the guys who are absolutely leaving, and the ones we bring on is significant, and it's significant enough to cover the cost of the raise, plus, Billy, in about a, I'm estimating about a $100,000 cushion.
If you have any questions of Mr. Trump?
Mr. Trump, in light of, I know I'd sent an email, but I didn't really hear back from you with respect to our concerns, my concerns, that's stated out loud and others silently, regarding the fact that we don't have necessarily a budget in line and in place for the city manager position. Do you not feel it might be wiser to leave that as a cushion just for the rainy day, that we're going to have to pay for perhaps an agency to help us select the salary, potentially an interim? Do you not think it might make sense to stow that, considering there's no hot hole in our pocket burning in this moment, until such time as we know what the budget's gonna look like for those expenditures, which are forever expenditures?
I really would not have suggested this unless I thought we could handle it financially. If I thought it would be physically irresponsible, even in light of what we may pay a city manager and what we may pay a search firm, I think we are in good enough financial condition to handle those expenses. The search firm will be a one-time expense, the city manager, there will be some offsets with, you know, the reduction in the mayor's salary, so I think that it's well within reason and well within our ability to pay it.
I mean, I understood that we made the corrections that the mayor referenced before, after workshops and what have you, I just, I just want to make sure that as you recommend these, and that there's consensus between all of accounting, that we're not putting ourselves in a position later where we won't be able to make capital expenditures, and will be limited, we being persons who are appointed, who are elected after this. You don't, you don't believe they'll be limited by this?
I think Mr. Trump has explained his lack of concern of that issue.
Mayor, ma'am, I was speaking with Mr. Trump. Mr. Trump, if you could, please go ahead and finish your thought.
Actually, I wouldn't have suggested it whether, if I thought it was physically irresponsible, and we do try to build cushions into the budget, and, you know, I appreciate the council's concern with finances of the city, since, you know, we're not, we're not in a position to borrow money, we can't be like the federal government and write, you know, mint our own money. But fortunately, looking at a number of things, the ad valorem, when I refigured it, we'll probably have a hundred-plus-thousand-dollar bump that I had to adjust the budget for before I handed it out, so there's some found money coming our way.
Alright, thank you, sir.
And some capital improvements, if you looked and saw the federally-directed spending that Senator Manchin is leaving us with, we, we're getting a pretty good windfall there, so.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Mayor, can I have?
Alright.
Mayor, can I say something?
Oh, Jenny, no, no, go on.
Oh, I just wanted to ask Billy, with all the extra funding that you get, Mayor, can you look at maybe giving some of the other city employees a raise that haven't had a raise for years? If you could just look over that for them?
I highly agree. Well, one group at a time, police department, public works, and now if this is, if y'all decide to approve that, that's, that'd be the fire department, we can look at it sequentially.
Okay.
And, you know, that doesn't leave too many departments.
Well, you still have your...
There's two sitting at that table right there, their employees are itching for a raise.
You have your employees here in the city, so, that works here in there.
Chief.
Maybe three.
Chief Wills explained, Councilman Reedy and I were in front of Chief Wills, and he was explaining to us the mechanism and the, when you call a fireman, and how the pay grade goes, and so, my question to, and I don't mean to throw you under the bus and ask you this, but, rather than doing, and this just is, I'm just saying, would there be a need to hire a, another firefighter, rather than a 2,000 across the board, so you have ample protection, and so you don't have that, that overtime that we've...
I think, I think he needed to, he said, if you need to do, he needed to hire three or four to fill the truck, or however it was, I can't remember the number now. I know me and Billy talked about it, because then we were talking about how it might cut back on overtime, and at the end of the day, that could save the city's money, and I think that's what Mrs. Hunter's referring to.
I think that is.
I think what you're referring to is our minimum manning.
That is, that is correct, right.
And our minimum staffing level is nine, we try to keep nine guys on duty 24/7. We have 10-man shifts, so when somebody, when one guy's off, you don't have to replace him, but when two people are off, you have to call somebody back for overtime. And where that works, we keep a list of who has, who's worked the most, and who, and we reverse it, so the guy that's worked the least gets asked first, then you just go down the list, and you get somebody to work. Now, you gotta understand with, with the shift personnel, they don't work a 2,080-hour year, they work a 2,200 and 16-hour year, because they work a 24-hour shift, and then off a day, and work a 24-hour shift, and then off five. So, it runs A B, A B, C D, C D. So, with that schedule, the guys that are on their long break, they'll come back and work the overtime, because it's, it's different than if somebody works a five-day week, say. With our schedule, you have, well, like I explained to my dad one time, I have 11 days in my week, because when I worked on, I was working for the park service part-time, and I worked three days one week and two days another week at the park, and my dad said he worked too much, so I explained to him, now, there's actually 11 days in my week, I still have three days off. And that's, it's just a different concept for the shift guys. When we're down on maintenance power, which has been recently, we've had a couple guys injured, so they've been on light duty, and we've been short a couple. So, with that, that really takes a toll on the overtime. But we have two guys that just finished training this week, they'll go on shift next week after 12, next payday, they'll go on shift, that fills the gaps. I still have one guy on light duty yet, but as soon as he comes back off light duty, all the shifts are full.
Okay.
We haven't been that way since last September.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Still, we start having people waiting.
Chief?
Yeah.
Any other questions, Chief Colvin?
Is there anything else you wanted to say, Chief? I mean, it's for your department.
Yeah, we appreciate whatever the city does, of course.
Thank you, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for that explanation, Chief.
Any other discussion on the $2,000 annual increase across the board for the fire department? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion second, all in favor in the cave saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by a like sign, motion carries, thank you very much. Thanks again, Chief, for the explanation. I'm still as confused as I was before you started, but thank you.
Try working it.
I'll bet. Okay, next, we have emergency purchase of seven police cruisers that have been extremely hard to come by the past four or five years, I guess, I guess since the pandemic anyhow. Chief, do you want to make a comment about the need for these cruisers?
Yes, like I said, the COVID pretty much depleted, we can't be able to get any cruisers for years now, so whenever, one time we had to go out of state and get cruisers, so that was, I was grateful to get that. We got, I mean, we got about 50, 50-car fleet, and out of that, five of those have almost 100,000, eight have 112,000 miles on them, or 12 years plus old, or starting to rust through the floorboard, et cetera. Three, three more of those vehicles have over 125,000. So, the cars that we've been putting down, we've been having a piece together of other cars until we can get those replaced, so it's, it's getting hard, get the parts are more expensive as it comes.
Very good. I will mention too, and I'm paraphrasing there a little bit, Billy Trump may have a comment, but I think we looked at the per cruiser price quoted here on these, on these cruisers that were asking approval to purchase, that the per-unit price was actually lower than if these vehicles were available, buying, with one of our buying groups, these prices stand up favorably, and are actually lower, so. Any other questions of Chief Bailey on the purchase of the vehicles? If not, do we have a motion to approve this purchase of the seven police cruisers?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion second to approve the purchase of the seven police cruisers for a total amount of 3,1,678.58. All in favor in the cave saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by a like sign, motion carries.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I do have a question. How are they different from their old cruisers? Is it any different?
It's just a newer model, basically, but, I mean, the reason they have to cost a little bit more is because of the brakes are more heavy-duty than a normal car, and the rotors and all that stop in there, they gotta be more heavy-duty than a normal car.
Okay.
So, it's just a few added features on there.
Okay.
If you add all in, the lights and everything else that comes in a cruiser, it's over 60-some thousand dollars a car.
Wow.
So, it's pretty expensive to outfit and approve.
Right. So, if we decide to get into Citizens Academy, we can have, get a ride?
In the back.
In the back. He said it first.
Okay, thank you.
But they're like explorers, aren't they?
Yes, they don't make the cars anymore, and we can get them. We have to grab a lot of them.
I know, I could tell.
There's other departments, and I don't wait in there. Yeah, they're basic, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay, next, Mr. Powell, request for City Manager Recruitment Committee, for the city to advertise for a services...
Yes, sir, Mayor. As most of you know, there has been a committee that the mayor had appointed, in which volunteers signed up to serve, and we've been meeting on Thursdays at 3:30 here in council chambers, and the purpose of this committee is to come up with a, a program in which we end up hiring a city manager. And, the step that we are asking tonight, that this past Thursday, the committee requested, was that city council authorize us to, to basically run an advertisement for a recruitment firm, to, to, once we get the recruitment firm, we want these firms to come to us, give us what their proposal would be, and how they're gonna go about coming up with a pool of candidates to be interviewed, to in the end, serve as the city manager. And, we are going to, if approved tonight, put an ad in the paper, I've given council a copy of what the ad says, basically, and it's an ad that will run this Friday, and then next Friday, and we are asking recruitment firms to submit their proposals to us by April the night. April the night is a council meeting, and it will be up to council to, to make the ultimate decision on whether or not we're going to hire, and which recruitment firm we will hire. But tonight, we come to council asking for permission to proceed, and seeking the city manager, requests, or seeking the city manager, or a company that will advertise and hopefully bring to us potential candidates to serve as city manager. And so, that's all we're asking tonight, is just a permission to proceed with this step, and if approved, the ads run this week and next week on Fridays, and then July 9th is the deadline, these recruiting agencies have to submit to us their proposal on how they will go about, and what their experience has been in finding candidates to serve in positions similar to the one that we are seeking to fill. So, that basically is where we are, we are looking for companies that are experienced, that have dealt with municipalities in the past, that will have a good idea of what we are looking for, and we feel confident that they will bring to us, in the end, candidates that will be viable candidates, and from that group, we'll, this body will hire a city manager. So, Mayor, that's what we're asking, is just a motion to approve... So mayor, that's what we're asking, is just a motion to approve us going forward with, with seeking a company requesting, what you call it, it's a request for proposal, just asking these recruitment firms to send to us their qualifications, and then we will make the decision and make a recommendation to council on which recruitment firm to hire.
Very good, any questions of Bill Fowler?
In that committee meeting, we also, there were a few hiring firms that we spoke about, I mean, and probably at least three or four, and we said we would contact them, telling them that we would be doing.
Absolutely.
Trying, looking for a headhunter, and so they just don't have to get the Beckley paper to, to, you know, apply.
Right, we will be sending this request for proposal to a number of companies, asking them to make the proposal to us.
Yeah.
You're, you're correct, we will target them.
Yes.
Mr. Fowler, do you, do we need to do a second one for the second intended modification to the purview of the committee we discussed?
Well, i- if you want to proceed that way, I think, right now, what, looking back on what this committee was appointed to do, and the fact that it is a committee based upon volunteers.
Sure, I can make the motion after we've won the first one to keep it clean.
And I think, need to, need to think about that, because if we're gonna do something to that extent, we may want to actually have this whole council work on that, that's, that's kind of a separate.
I remember when we left the committee, that was the recommendations that we intended to propose to council. If you'd like, I can present it after the first decision.
Okay, well, let's, let's.
Bill Fowler, does that need to be on the agenda as an action item?
I think it's fine to discuss that, I, I'm not, not concerned about that, I think the, the agenda item is sufficient to, to permit discussion and, and action if they want, want this committee to consider the next, next matter.
All righty. Okay, any other questions of Mr. Fowler? If not, do we have a motion to proceed as, as described by Bill Fowler to advertise for this individual?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion, second, to approve this committee to move forward to advertise for the services of a job recruitment agency. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, by a like sign. Now, Mr. Dunlap, you wanted to make another motion?
Thank you, mayor. The other recommendation from committee that I wanted to make sure we covered was that as the details are, are quite laid out in, in the ordinance we've passed as to job description for the city manager, it leaves a slight vacuum as to the specific responsibilities that our mayor will be giving up, that our council will be absorbing. So the discussion was, and frankly, very wisely recommended by President Stewart, that we expand the purview of what the committee will be focusing on to allow a, a conversation, and maybe recommendations as to what the council person's responsibilities will expand into, what will we specifically, sitting in this chair, be doing in the future. The council, excuse me, all the committee members seemed excited about the opportunity to find out what exactly our future council members will be responsible for. So I, I would like to make a motion that ultimately, the committee's purview be expanded into working out the enumerations of the duties of future council members, for simplicity, clarity, and making sure we don't engage in any missteps in the future.
That's in form of a motion?
Yes, your honor.
Okay, do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Have motion, second, to proceed with expanded study into the future chores of both the mayor and council. Any other questions of Mr. Dunlap?
A question on, is that not outlined in our city code?
If, if I may, it, it in, in fact, is very clearly laid out, as Ms. Hunter pointed out, the duties of our future city manager. However, there appears to be a vacuum left between the items for which the mayor currently engages in, and some of those are state statutorily required for a mayor to do. So if a city council person is truly, as the new ordinance details, the policymaker of the city of Beckley, I think it would be beneficial to find out what precisely city council members are able to do in the future. For instance, what are the parameters for a future city council person to put something on the agenda so that it's heard in a timely fashion? Those items, we would like to have this committee address, mirroring other situally, similarly situated cities, as the mayors mentioned, so that we have the opportunity to all know what the job description details for future city council members. That's all we would like to do, is just make recommendations about the roles for council persons in the future.
Okay, we have a motion, second, to proceed along the lines as described by Mr. Dunlap. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, by a like sign. Motion carries, thank you. Next, Mr. Fowler, resolution for USDA rural development grant certifications.
Yes, sir, mayor. Tonight, there is a resolution, I believe that each member of council has received it. This deals with what had taken place some time ago, I believe it was the thirteenth, thirteenth of February, council approved a grant for the city to receive through the United States Department of Agricultural Rural Development. The grant was in the amount of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, and this is which there's going to be equipment, I think, being purchased from that by the Board of Public Works to be used in the city. Now, what is required is this resolution needs to be approved by council. What it does, it approves certain forms that now council must authorize the mayor to, to enter into, and to, to obligate the city to comply with the terms that the USDA is requesting. These are the operating budget, we have to furnish that, and ensure that is accurate, that's the operating budget of the city, we have to turn in, that, that is RD four four two dash seven, then RD one nine four zero dash one is a request for obligation of funds, RD four hundred dash four is the assurance agreement, AD one zero four seven is the certification regarding disbarment, suspension, and other matters, and RD one nine four two dash six is a letter of intent to meet conditions. And this resolution basically states, be it resolved by common counsel of City of Beckley, that the City of Beckley approves the USDA rural development grant certification and assurance forms identified below, agrees to be bound by the terms contained therein, and authorizes mayor of the City of Beckley to execute any documents required to facilitate the subject grants. These forms must be approved, and they have to be read by their, their numbers, and this will be furnished to the USDA rural development grant committee that oversees this. So mayor, at this time, I would ask that the resolution be approved by motion, so that we can move forward with this.
Okay, very good, this is a formal, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion, second, approve the USDA rural development grant certifications as described by Mr. Fowler. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, by a like sign. Motion carries, thank you. Now, an old business, today's basketball day.
Yay!
Willard Wilson plays Spring Valley in about nine minutes. Shady Spring beat North Marion fifty-one thirty this morning, so we got some excitement around this neck of the woods. Another thing I want to mention, we've been requested to conduct a workshop for the Raleigh County Family Support Center, theater of West Virginia, Raleigh County Community Action, and then also, we want to throw in, we would need council's approval for the removal of two parking meters on Main Street, directly in front of the, the vacant lots that, that are now vacant, where the buildings collapsed. We have a buyer for that property, and he'll need entrance and egress ability, so, but anyhow, we'll get this, we'll get these, this workshop scheduled here in the next ten days or so. I hate to wear everybody out with workshops, but these are important, and we need to do that. Anything else from, oh, a week from today, there'll be a gentleman, Dr. Best, from the UK, who founded the Inclusive Recovery City Program, and Beckley is in the process of being adjusted, or adopted. Then, that program is the first city in the US to, to be so designated, so that will be at nine thirty on the nineteenth, a week from today, at the WVU Tech Building on Neville Street. So I understand the reservations have, have been pretty high, there's a lot of interest in this, so I would encourage anybody to, if you can go online and register to, to attend, if you'd like. Other than that, what else do we have from any members of council under old business?
Speaking on the R, IRC, is there a particular reason or, or why we didn't have a workshop on this, and why Mr. Phillips just came to council last time and spoke to us? I was, I mean, based off of everything we've done the last three and a half years I've been here, if someone comes and presents a council, like Mr. Phillips did, it seems pretty routine, the next council meeting, we have a, a vote of approval of some sort, but at the end of the day, I don't think any of us up here, other than, you know, I guess you, mayor, had a say so in this, and, I mean, it, it hit Facebook this morning, and I got probably about twenty messages, phone calls, text messages, from the community about this, and they're very concerned, and asked, you know, why we didn't have a voice on this issue. So my main question is, what's different on this charter that's representing the city that city council did not have to have on the agenda and vote on?
Frankly, I mean, to interject my personal thinking into it, it's a tremendous honor for the City of Beckley, it's a great cause, it attacks the most troubling problem we have here in Southern West Virginia, in Appalachia. I'll, I'll admit, it never dawned on me that city council would even need to be involved in this, I can't imagine, frankly, can't imagine anybody opposing it, we're very excited about, so.
Mayor, Mayor Jack, I have also been inundated today with, with questions about this as well. Nearly all day long, people have been asking what the IRC is all about, and so people have been very wondering about this, so.
That's my explanation.
And the major concern, in my opinion, on this, are we, are we going to open ourselves up as a hub, where we're going to have, you know, a homeless problem, the homeless shelters losing funding, or we're going to have more people up and down Main Street and Prince Street? I mean, we're doing a job, and I, I've heard Mr. Dunlap talk for years about how bad, you know, the foot traffic is on Prince Street, and, I mean, it's, it's, being up there for four weeks working right beside his office every day, it's, I feel bad for, you know, chief and them, for what they have to deal with every day. A boy that works for us, he lives on North Hever, and the things that happened behind his house on the rails, the trails that night, that he has to do for his two kids, it's, it's very sad, so I'm worried, my personal opinion is, I'm worried that we're opening ourselves up to a big can of worms, and that we're going to bring a lot of stuff here, and do we have the resources to handle that, is my biggest question.
Well, those of you, and I know the answer I'll get, but if, if you begin to make a list of these calls you've received all day, you and Sherri, I would like to talk to these people.
I think a few will probably sign up on the last sheet, probably want to talk here in a minute.
All righty, very good. Okay, anything else from any member of council under old business?
I'd just always like to thank the police department, public works, code enforcement, the chief, all of you offer what you do every day, Parks and Recreation, I wanted to ask you, Ms. Baker, do you know when the equipment would be out on Barbara?
They were supposed to have started, because it was mild in February, right? They were gonna go out there.
Right.
And he, the contractor, all of his people quit, he did one of the other, and so he was trying to go, and he has talked to, I thought they were gonna, you know, we hear every two weeks they're gonna start, and they haven't yet.
Right, okay.
So, but they have been awarded that, so it's not like we can take it from them, so it's pretty, I hope so.
Okay.
The equipment's been purchased, we're just waiting for, once the excavation gets done, it's not going to take long.
Right, okay, I know our children would be excited, yeah.
Leslie, I also had somebody contact me about some things that were going on at, at Historic Black Knight, and wanted to know about construction, I wasn't.
I had sent that in an email to you all last time, that they were doing the, the roof, they were doing the cool house roof over there.
I wonder, okay.
There was a leak in there, did you not get the email from me, two weeks ago?
Well, that's great that it's, that we're going forward.
That was, there was some flashing that had come apart on the right side of the building, and we had a cherry picker there for one day fixing the flashing, but most of the work is the roof going on to the cool house.
That's a positive side.
It had been damaged, you know, it was one of those things, we found a little hole, and it got bigger and bigger, and so we just decided to replace the whole block of it.
And you did that with internal labor, I think, yeah.
Oh, yeah, we did, with the, the people from Parks and Rec. And hopefully, we'll be able to open it up. So far, we have six lifeguards returning from last year.
That's wonderful.
And we're still hoping for someone.
Is there an issue over there that happened today?
We had a water main break, unfortunately.
I'm sorry.
And one thing led to another thing, too, and it was just, it was, Billy came over with us this morning, it was a major pipe that came in, and it must have happened sometime during the night, it flooded all night, so, but I have to, a good shout out to Servpro, I've never seen, they came in within an hour, and they called on them, with fourteen people, and got right to work, and are gonna come back, it's gonna take a little bit to dry out, it was everywhere on the first floor, it was actually flowing down right road like a river.
Wow.
And it happened, I wish there was some way we could, no, but we had people there to go to work by six thirty this morning, so, we were there till seven thirty last night, so it happened sometime, but we've already got our, acclaimed into the insurance company and rectified, and have already, you know, got some replacement things online, so that hopefully it will only be shut down for maybe a little longer. But we actually might have to say as well, that Tamrac has been very, very helpful, and we moved four big adults to Tamrac, that some things that we have done, there's a group of kids that come on their way back to Pittsburgh from Orlando, it's a school trip that they've taken, it would have been the second time they would have stopped with us, and that we called Tammy at Tamrac, and she said she'd take them immediately at our prices, not Tamrac prices. So we're very pleased that she was there to help us.
That's nice.
To do that, so that we, we had a bereavement dinner, we had a couple other things, but she's doing all four of those, so that no customer had to be disappointed.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Hey, and Rob, I got, I got phone calls too, just like Sherri and Cody did.
Okay.
You're gonna give that list to the mayor?
Yeah, I'll give you that, give me that list.
You want that list?
There's sixteen.
There you go. I have some to add to that as well.
Go ahead.
They're long, there's, there are a lot.
Good. All righty, anything else from any member of council under old business? Anything from any member of council under new business? Okay, if not, we'll go directly to public comments. We have made little change, we're not accepting calls from people over the phone, we did that as a courtesy, we've had people recently who would not identify themselves, and that's one thing that we always require for our records, is identity, just like we have on this, this sheet here. So anybody who wants to make a public comment going forward, more than lucky to come up, more than welcome to come up to the stand and speak your piece, but we'll get started now with Mary West.
Good evening, once again, everyone. I am back to say to you all, I want to thank those that tried to do something down on the route to help me and the citizens down there, I want to thank you all that tried. Those that didn't try, I'm gonna thank you all some. And then you're talking about all these homeless people coming in, I lay in my bed at night watching an eighteen wheeler come from Beckley two something in the morning, down La Rue Avenue, and I spoke about it, now he's coming down there at twelve forty. What is he bringing to Beckley? All these homeless people that I see walking through here, and down in front of my house, throwing backpacks in my yard with drugs, and a list that says hit list with an S on it, threatening to kill two females. So you all do the best you can, and I'm gonna let that, and don't clap all at once, I'm gonna make some people happy tonight. I am no longer running for council person for ward five, and on top of that, I will no longer be a citizen of Beckley, West Virginia, because you all have not listened to nothing I've said to you, and if I get on the council, you're still not gonna listen to me. So be blessed, all of you.
You too.
Okay, Rose Campbell Regaldo.
I don't really know how this works, because I've never done this, I'm kind of nervous.
You have three minutes, you'll be fine.
I have some paperwork for you guys.
Oh, can I just send that?
Okay.
Um, I'm here in response to the last council meeting. I think I've heard from somebody that wasn't a resident, a seed sower, or an employee of fruits of labor, but I was. And I'm here to talk about that, because Mr. Phillips and, you know, some other people were saying those accusations weren't true, and they brought some of the proof that I have. As a employee, former employee of seed sower, because I don't work anymore because of the labor board back in August, we, I see familiar faces. All those tips that you guys brought, we never did get those. They actually went to Heather Neff, who is a manager who is not in recovery. And since this last council meeting, I have spoken with two employees and a former resident, and I had to black out their names because they don't run, there's a lot of issues going on, but that tip log that shows where these tips went are now locked up. And that happened after this meeting. It is a, the issue with the fruits of labor and the seed sower thing, I'm trying to cram this all in here, is that they're two of the same. It's not fruits of labor and it's not seed sower. They're the same. Tammy Jordan started fruit, started seed sower, and then she has her fruits of labor. They make a hun, all that profit they make, all that money that they make from you guys coming in is pocketing the money, because we were not paid by fruits of labor, we were paid by workforce. And then on top of that, we provided free labor, that's why I called the Labor Board to Tammy on Mondays, because we were told that it was considered training, which if you look in there, I have included the actual certificate that they gave us, which is not anything you could use, it's not accredited, I actually went on the website today of the place that runs those, and West Virginia isn't even listed on but one of their training programs but workforce. So, we relied, said that we would get these culinary training program certificate, we didn't, we never did. I learned how to wash dishes every Monday, and it wasn't culinary training, it was regular restaurant prep work for the whole week. On top of that, you know, residents of seed sower have to complete six months of training with fruits of labor in order to graduate, so that's where she gets her labor, that was an issue. And then the money that we make from fruits of labor goes right back into Jay's pocket. So, I'm asking for, like, some of you guys to look into this, because this is already written.
Fifteen seconds, ma'am.
Okay. There's a letter in there to the governor that I wrote, that was just sent out, this is the second one I've written, but maybe you guys take a look at some of the grants, there's a grant in there that said we're supposed to be doing all this stuff.
Very good, thank you.
May I ask this young lady a question? Would you be okay?
Uh, sure.
Okay. Briefly, Jay cornered me on a ladder today, and he said that for the first six months, the Workforce West Virginia program is in fact your employer, but that after, for which tips wouldn't be available. And I do know folks that work through that Workforce West Virginia Transitional position. In your experience, the folks who, and I've never talked to you before, so this isn't prepped, but after you folks worked there six months, are you then available to receive tips after you're no longer an employee of workforce? Is that temporary, just to be fair to everyone that's not here to speak?
Um, actually, that was what we were told, we were, but we never did, and actually we were told not to even disclose to the public that we weren't allowed tips, because then the, then Heather would not get tips. Heather, they would not get their tips.
Were you there over six months?
Yes.
And you didn't receive tips even after you were converted to one of their employees?
No, I actually had to sign a paper, which I tried to get a copy of, which was locked at Tammy's farm.
Where's the paper?
It was at fruits of labor, but they moved it to Tammy's farm, and then I went down to workforce myself and asked Donnie about that, why we couldn't get tips, because Tammy said we couldn't because we made ten dollars an hour, and Donnie said the only reason we couldn't get tips was because he couldn't write it in the reimbursement for Tammy. And after six months, they still don't pay their employees, it's West Virginia workforce.
Okay.
And not workforce, jobs a hope, sorry.
Jobs a hope.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kristi Lilly.
He said that to me today.
Hello, my name's Kristi Lilly, I know quite a few of you, Sherry was my preschool teacher. I'm a resident of Beckley, lived, grew up in Beckley, graduated from Woodrow W U, moved to Illinois for a little while, moved home with my husband, and we have two kids here. We have two businesses, raising two children here, very involved in the community, and I am adamantly against becoming an inclusive recovery city. Beckley deserves better than this. We are already struggling to be a good place for young working adults and families to thrive like mine. Our streets are already crowded with drug ridden individuals and people asking for money, yet we have more marijuana stores than we have grocery stores. The lack of support for young adults and children with healthy, safe activities for our citizens and visitors is just astounding. Now, our homeless shelter has lost almost three quarters of its funding, but we're going to have, we're going to end up with more resources for the addicts than the children and their families that have nowhere to live. We can barely keep a pool open for our children to have a safe place to swim, a place where they can be in a healthy, safe environment, and I'm guessing we're not going to be signing up the people in these programs to do lifeguard classes. We're lacking a modern, updated, size appropriate sports facility, specifically indoor. Cities all over West Virginia have built these to enhance their communities and benefit from tourism, yet all we can do is paint the wall. Inclusive cities, seed sowers, and fruits of labor seem to be less focused on true recovery. I didn't see anything on their websites or anything about clinically, psycholo, clinical psychologists, proven, research based, proven substance programs. It's all about what we will give you so you'll recover. None of that, I'm actually a counselor, I have a master's in counseling, I have done substance abuse classes, none of that is even mentioned. When I started researching, actually, it seems like they're top tier, and this really seems like a creepy pyramid scheme to me, they're top tier, the Fletcher Group has made almost nine million dollars in the last three years, and they only have thirty employees. And these are the people that are filtering down and taking our cities and putting these groups in here to do recovery, but really...
Fifteen seconds, Kristi.
It's not. They lack accountability and personal ownership, and I would really like those programs do, and I would really like to hear from you why you felt that our already resource strained city would benefit from this, because I don't see how it's going to benefit young families like mine at all.
Very good, thank you. Chris Kincaid.
So, I just want to kind of reiterate what a lot of people's concerns are on this recovery inclusive community and us being labeled as that. If you look at the countries where these programs have been successful in, they have resources, they have free healthcare, they have public housing, we have none of those, not efficiently anyway. And I fear if we move in the direction of just allowing this without taking into account our already stretched resources, which has been mentioned, I think we're going to find that, you know, we're not able to offer the kind of services these individuals would need. But besides that, I wanted to talk about something completely different. I've talked a lot about housing the last few weeks I've been here. Can we talk about public employees? You know, something that could be super simple, you know, when we're talking about hiring, is, I know you guys are trying to hire people for our parks and hire lifeguards and things like that, attendance for concession staff. You know, something that I think we should do is, she mentioned we have several dispensaries around town, cannabis is legal here now. I know you guys drug test for a lot of these positions, but when you're hiring someone like waiter or concession stand worker, I think it's high time the city stops considering people who use cannabis as unemployable and unable to hold any level of job, even something such as concession stand worker and waiter. Besides that, our public parks, we need to hire people to actually run our public parks, you know, and not just Black Knight Country Club or New River. Freedom Skate Park never has an attendant. You guys spent money to build bathrooms that the public can't use. I was there with my kids the other day, there was probably forty-five people there, moms with kids, and I can't, I can tell you at least eight people took off with their kids because there was no public restroom for them to use. We have nobody running our concession stand there. We need employees to actually run our parks and be present at them. If there's an issue where, you know, we need security at these concession stands, then that's what we need to do, but either way, we, our public restroom shouldn't have padlocks on them, not at our public parks. I think that's contradictory to providing services for the citizens. That's all I want to talk about. Thank you.
Thank you. Tina Pinnell.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Go Woodrow.
Go, yeah.
Go stand. I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank the animal rescue. There was a full month of, where there was a dog that was expecting any day now, that was roaming around the neighborhood but was hiding out behind my porch at night, and I called them last Sunday, and just this past Wednesday, they picked her up, they found her a home in a welling house, and I just want to thank the rescue care as well as the home that took her in, the Home with Sore and Hope Rescue Animal Shelter. And then I also just wanted to make quick comment that Camp Creek Mountain Maintenance, phenomenal. All three of my lots that I own, I've had them for the last year, so great decision if you do consider them, even though you voted on them, great decision and great price. Other than that, thank you guys.
She was a cheerleader for Woodrow.
Natalie Koots.
Hi there.
Good evening.
I know lots of you, lots of you know me, I taught over two thousand students in this county, usually in some of the forest districts, and that was my choice. So, it was my job to create scenarios that kids would understand. I've been sitting out here in the gallery for several weeks, I've been keeping my mouth shut, which is really, really a chore for me. But in listening and watching and learning, the way that I would relate what I've seen to the children that I teach, and I'm going to date myself here, do you all remember Charlie Brown and Lucy and the football? You guys remember how Lucy dangled the football, and then every time the humble Charlie Brown would run across to kick the ball? What happened? She pulled the football out from under him. Okay? Football number one that I've noticed here in City Council, we talk about homelessness, but we kind of ignore it, you know, not in my hometown. We don't do something about the homelessness, we can't take back our downtown district. Fact here is, we get this community development block grant every year, and I know some of it goes to parks, I know some of it goes to paving, but the number one thing on the needs assessment is housing, fair, equitable, and acceptable housing. As of December twenty-third, city had about roughly one point seven million dollars. Wouldn't it be better to put a little bit of that community development grant into housing to get these folks off the street and maybe use that surplus for paving and parks and things like that? And I have to also, I don't know if Angela King's here, but if she is, I give kudos because I know what a painstaking job it is to write grants, because I'm a successful grant writer. So, I have to give kudos to that person. I think the city needs a full-time grant writer in order to take advantage of all of the money there is out there. But anyway, you know, we dangle this football belt, we're going to do something about the homeless, and then at the last minute, jerk the football away, miss the kick, okay? I heard about the I R C the other night, that was a bit of a surprise to me, that was the first thing I'd ever heard, and I try to keep current on what's going on here. And I have to say that people have asked me what I know about it, and I don't know anything about it because the public was not made aware. So, you know, we're given this real pretty box, and oh, this is going to be a wonderful thing, well, is it? I worked at the warming center the other night. There are problems that we can't ignore. This is a problem we cannot ignore. City manager, another football. I read, the mayor said we were going to see that on the ballot, we were going to get to vote, and I thought, good, that's an equitable and fair thing, that's a good thing for the citizens to get to vote. One more time, that football's dangled, and then Lucy pulls it back. So, I'm saying to you, because you're representing me right now, and I am a longtime employee paying taxes in this county, first job was on sixteen years old.
Fifteen seconds.
Thank you. What I'm asking you is, I need out of my representation on this council, a whole lot less Lucy and a whole lot more of the humble Charlie Brown.
Christina Basden.
Hello, I'm Christina Basden, as you all know me. I would like to request from this council body to amend the city manager form of government job requirements to require the city manager to live within city limits. If the city is good enough for our mayor and most city council members, then it should be good enough for our city manager. Two, there have been two committee meetings the last two Thursdays, there will be another one this Thursday, March fourteenth at three thirty, right here in council chambers, which I will be attending that as well. And I agree with the committee members, five of you sitting up here today, to actively advertise for a city manager now to expedite the process. I don't see why we can't just hand over the current applications that we would be receiving over to said headhunter. The other thing that I would like to talk about is the raises for our fire department, which I have no problem with, I think it's great. The words viable were not used when we were giving the police raises or when we were giving the raises to Public Works. It was implied that it would bankrupt our city accounts, that we would have to borrow from the salt fund, and it is made clear now more than ever that we had the money to pay Public Works what they asked and give them a more significant raise. Currently, we have people on that work for the city that have now been kicked off the cliff for public assistance, which they should never have been on public assistance to begin with, but now they can't afford food or medication, and I find that egregious. We are not taking care of our people. And the last thing is a question that I would like an answer to because I can't find the answer to. What is the current process for a member of council to get an item placed on the agenda for a common council meeting? Is that the will or the pleasure of the mayor, or is there an official process?
Gail Oaks.
I just, I'm Gail Oaks, I am the general manager of Theater West Virginia, and I'm very simple, I was my first time here at council. Nice to meet, nice to see all of you, I know several of you up there, nice to meet you, Mayor, I've met you once or twice, and I just want to say thank you for including us a part of the workshop, and I look forward to that, and just thank you for your time and consideration for the people of Beckley and Theater West Virginia.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mayor Gail is a successful member of Leadership West Virginia, or Leadership Beckley. She's an inspired leader, we're lucky to have her.
Right, right, I've heard you on the radio a number of times, too, you do a great job. Christine, I do want to address your, if you have a worthy agenda item, Bill Fowle, our city attorney, reviews our agendas before we publish them, but if you have an item, talk to your council person, and if it's deemed to be something that is of general interest, it'll go on the agenda, we do that frequently. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else for the good of the cause?
I hope Woodrow wins.
I do too. We have emotional journ. I do too. We have emotional journey. Thank you.